And we'll all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilmember Mizony?
Here.
Councilmember Palfini?
Here.
Councilmember Verisan? Councilmember Wetstein?
Present.
Mayor Parham is attending via Zoom but is running a little behind, so he will attend. We will see him as soon as he logs in.
Okay, the next item on the list is the acceptance of the agenda and any urgency items. Does everybody agree on the agenda or have anything to add that's an emergency? Nope?
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Mayor Protem, I do have to take that via roll call.
Okay, so we need to do a roll call all evening, so... Start us off.
Okay. Councilmember Wetstein?
Present.
No, yes, yeah, your name.
Yeah, your name.
Oh. On the acceptance of the agenda.
Yay, sorry.
That's fine. Councilmember Palfini?
Yay.
Councilmember Verisan?
Yay.
Councilmember Mizony?
Yes.
And so it passes. Now on to item number four, non-agenda public comment. Now is the time for the audience to speak on items that are not currently on the agenda. If they're on the agenda, we wait. So is anything else to say? I see we have a crowd. Nothing? Okay. Moving on, we'll move on to item number... oh. Yeah, moving on, we'll move on to item number five, council member announcements, meetings, reports, and comments. We can start off with Mark, you prepared?
I have nothing at this time. I may hold it until there's further discussion on one of the items.
Okay. Melissa?
I have no announcements, but I would make a comment that it's wonderful to see so much of our public here who's interested in our community, and I'm excited to learn what they want to tell us, and I would encourage them to come just not for one subject but for many because we have a lot of work to do on Weed.
Pat?
I have nothing at this time, but this week is back-to-school week, so thank you for all your support and wonderful audience. Thank you for coming, everyone.
And again, I will be silent tonight. I have nothing to report. We'll move on to item number six, the consent agenda. At this time, I'll read every item on the consent agenda, and at the end, if anybody wants to pull anything, we'll do that. Item A, public works, by motion, council will consider... Can you hear me off of this thing here? "Council will consider second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance number 486-2025, amending Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places of the Weed Municipal Code to add Chapter 1206 pertaining to encroachment and special event permits." Item B, memorandum of understanding, by motion, council will consider approving memorandum of understanding with the Weed Police Officers Association for sworn and non-sworn personnel. So that's a contract between us and the sworn officers and non-sworn. Permit fees, item number C, by motion, council will consider adopting Resolution 22-2025, approving fees for encroachment permits, special events, appeals to city council, and adding an additional fee to the fence, tree, and sign permit applications. Item D, by motion, council will consider approving minutes from July 10, 2025, regular and special meetings, and July 19, 2025, special meeting. Item E, by motion, council will consider approving payment warrants dated July 9, 2025, through August 6, 2025, including any voided warrants and manual issued items totaling $1,854,208.15. Item F, by motion, council will consider approval and filing of end-of-month report for June and July 2025. Does any council member wish to pull any items from the consent?
No, I do not.
Okay. So I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to...
Public comment?
Yes. Oh, any public comment? Anybody want to speak on any of these items? Okay. Now.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda A through F.
I second that motion.
First and a second, and we'll take a roll vote.
Councilmember Wetstein?
Yay.
Councilmember Palfini?
Yes.
Councilmember Verisan?
Yay.
Councilmember Mizony?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is council business. The first item of order is A, human resources city manager. By motion, council will consider entering in to an agreement, an employment agreement, between the City of Weed and Dustin Stambaugh as our new city manager. Any discussion?
No, I think we had a thorough meeting with him when he was interviewed, and I think, in my opinion, he's the best person for the job.
And so his contract will be entered into, and he will take his office September 1st? Is that what I get?
September 2nd after Labor Day.
Okay. Okay. If there's no disagreement, then we can approve that contract and his employment.
I'll make a motion to approve human resource city manager by motion for Dustin Strombaugh, the city manager.
I'll second.
Mayor Protem, public comment?
Public comment on the new city manager? Thank you, you always got to remind me, never changes. So actually, we're going to welcome a new city manager, so anybody that's out there in the audience who wishes to meet him, stop on by.
I'll second the motion.
And Mayor Protem, if I could, just briefly provide a short summary of the terms of the employment agreement?
Sure.
It's a standard employment agreement. I think it's very similar to the prior employment agreement with the previous city manager. I believe it's a three-year term. Let me confirm that. Salary, starting salary of $149,904 annually. I believe there is a severance provision for dismissal without cause. Six months severance, which is relatively standard. Benefits, CalPERS benefits, Social Security, similar to management. And it will require annual performance evaluations as well. So that is a brief summary, which we are supposed to provide under the Brown Act for executive compensation.
Yeah, I jumped ahead of us a little bit there without asking for a report, so let me go on that one. So again, we have a first from Mark, a second from Melissa. Could we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Wetstein?
Yay.
Councilmember Palfini?
Yes.
Councilmember Verisan?
Yay.
Councilmember Mizony?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number B, facilities. By motion, council will consider adopting Resolution 23-25, awarding the City Hall Roof Replacement Project to United Building Contractors. And I guess get a report from Chris.
Yes, so tonight I'm looking for approval to go and contract with United Building Contractors. They were the lowest bidder with the complete bid package. They came in at $433,500. That's including with the removal of the asbestos on the roof.
Is there any...
Yes, and it's subject to change orders, of course. I mean, Lord only knows what they're going to find once they start doing the tear-off.
But it does include asbestos and remediation for mold?
No, that does not include the remediation for mold. We actually have to get a specialized contractor in here to take care of that.
Okay.
So that'll be extra cost?
It's not part of the roof. No, it's not part of the roof.
That's an interior issue, not a exterior issue.
I do have a question, though. So when is the timeframe for starting and possibly when it's finished?
I'll be able to get that at a later date. Right now, I don't know.
Soon, I hope?
Yes, it's supposed to happen before weather comes in.
Any other question?
Just for councils aware, we did have a... prior to the bids, we did have an engineer company look at the roof. They advised if action wasn't taken soon, we probably wouldn't have a building within two years.
I think the council is fully aware of the dire need of our roof. I think the public needs to be aware. And with that said, is there any public comment? If you have a public comment, come on up and give us your name and address.
My name is Shereen Strauss. I'm with Siskiyou.News, and it was on... Item A is Dustin Stambaugh here?
No, he is not present.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments from the audience? Okay, with that, chair will entertain a first and second. Motion on the facilities.
I would, by motion, move to adopt Resolution 23-2025, awarding the City Hall Roof Replacement Project to the United Building Contractors, Inc.
I'll second.
Got a first, got a second, and we will need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Wetstein?
Yay.
Councilmember Palfini?
Yes.
Councilmember Verisan?
Yay.
Councilmember Mizony?
Yes.
Huh? Motion passed, and we're moving on to health and safety on motion C. By motion, council will consider approving Resolution Number 24-2025, approving additional license as public necessity and convenience for off-sale type 21 alcohol beverages at 175 East Vista Drive. I guess we hear from Justin? Chief Mayberry?
So you've seen these before. This is a... so there's a bit of a discrepancy. I don't know if the... I don't see the LLC representative here tonight, but typically, it's required. There's a census tract number that's provided by ABC that you're allowed to have without question or without council approval, excuse me. There is a problem with the ABC website in that they have somehow placed businesses that are in the same... that are right next to each other in different census tracts. So they told the applicant that one wasn't needed. We are still having one because when I looked at it, they said that we were one under what is allowed. We are currently five over what is allowed. So that is why we are coming for a waiver because we've required that of other businesses that currently are operating. So the business at 175 Vista, you have to determine if there's a need or necessity for the community for it. There's currently four off-sale licenses within 600 feet of each other. This would be the fifth. ABC doesn't count pre-approved waivers, but there are two pre-approved due to potential future business developments that in part of their plan to planning commission and council also ask for that waiver ahead of time in anticipation of construction. So you potentially could have more, but right now, this is just related to the four that exist and the one potential. I will point out that there is an issue with the business becoming what they've proposed in that the business isn't necessarily... it was recently remodeled, and as part of that building permanent, the sign-off on that, which isn't complete, didn't hold them to the standard that would be required for a liquor store. It held them to the standard to be a restaurant. So there is going to be some issues there on that aspect.
Okay, so nobody has withdrawn any of those licenses?
So we can't weigh the... we did grant waivers for future businesses, but we can't necessarily, I don't believe, I'd, you know, refer to the... or defer to the council, but I don't think that you can count that against them because they haven't developed it. Actually, there's actually three out there. One of them is associated with this LLC. They also asked for one a prior... but I believe that there may be a sunset on that due to the time that has elapsed. But they also were... had a previous business development idea that they never came to fruition. So right now, we're just talking about the four that exists and the one that wants to come in.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
I don't.
As I understand this, this is the equivalent of a convenience store sales. This is not a request for a liquor license for a restaurant that's going in.
No, that was kind of confusing because they've asked ABC for a transfer. You don't usually transfer type... this is a type 21 for distilled spirits, beer and wine. You don't normally transfer one of those. You transfer an on-sale, which would be a bar. Most people associate that with a bar. They're not asking to transfer an on-sale. They're asking to transfer an off-sale liquor store, yes.
Okay. Any questions, Pat?
No, not at this time.
Because we do have a number of off-sale licenses out there.
We do. We currently have 12. We're allowed... our census tract is allowed seven. There is some confusion on the census tract. I will... and I will also state that there was another business. We actually had five out there at one point. Or, excuse me, four. We had four, but one of them gave up their distilled spirits, so they currently only have a beer and wine. So there's still four, but they don't have the type 21. They now have a type 20.
So if you have a type 21, can you sell that license?
It's not a difficult license to get. The one you're thinking of is an on-sale. Those are very limited, and they have high value.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. There's a lot of close proximity, as you were saying. Is this making any disadvantage to the businesses that already exist?
It's a, you know, free-market thing. It's competition. So, I mean, it's ultimately what it is. It's... it does have a disadvantage to somebody that already has one. They might cut into their sales, but not, you know...
The nature of it, okay.
Not a whole lot you can do about that.
I don't necessarily think that that's something that we need to be considering. It's just the effect on the... it's a community need, community effect, so...
Is this in the corridor of the trucking that occurs instead?
Yes. We also have... we have the four out at South Weed currently. We also have some downtown, and... So our census tract counts everything from Dollar General in Chastina. I believe that's in our census tract, all the way to South Weed. So we do have Ray's, Layton's, just to name a few. We have every business that has a beer or wine license.
I just think there's just a lot of gas and alcohol, but anyway, it's just me.
Yeah.
Any comments from the audience on this?
I could use more volume. You guys are liking the distance.
I can't get any closer. That's closer. But then I can't open up my computer. Let me swap some sides. Okay. Is that better? Everybody else get a little closer if you wouldn't mind, or shift your microphone. So any other comment besides being louder from the audience? Okay. So, seen anything else?
I move to deny the approval of Resolution Number 24-25.
I hear a second? Actually... Which one is 175 East Vista?
It's the former restaurant that has a souvenir shop in the front next to Valero.
I'll second that motion. All in favor? Can I get a roll call?
Wait a minute. Don't we have a dilemma for the mayor? Shouldn't he be in? He's available.
Is he available now?
Has he? No, he's not logged in yet.
Okay. Just want to make sure everybody got a vote in there.
So we have a motion to deny the resolution. Councilmember Wetstein?
Yay.
Councilmember Palfini?
Yes.
Councilmember Verisan?
Yes.
Councilmember Mizony?
No.
I'd let the record show.
Load of three to one, the motion passes?
I just want to add, it'd probably been beneficial for the LLC, somebody from the LLC to show up on their behalf. That would probably help a little bit.
They do have the availability to appeal.
No, I'm just saying. I'm just putting that out there in case they're watching. It's always beneficial to come and give your side, so...
Okay. On to item D, League of Cities. By motion, council will consider selection of voting delegate and voting delegate alternate for the annual conference in Long Beach, October 8th through 10th on 2025. Did you want to go on another vacation? You just came back from Georgia.
No. I'll pass on that this year. I don't think we made it there last year.
Who didn't? We didn't?
No.
I don't think any of us did.
No, we didn't.
Yeah. It is good for any new council member if they do have some startup mayor and council position meetings that are actually pretty good meetings, well-run. They have other topics if you're interested.
I would love to go to Long Beach and to hear this. However, I am scheduled for a murder trial during that period of time.
Can we get you excused?
If you would like to write the judge, as soon as they're assigned, I'll...
I don't want to talk to the judge, okay?
I can serve as an alternate alternate, and if that case goes away, I'd be happy to go on behalf of the City of Weed and for my own edification of what comes on... goes on there. I just can't commit solidly to those dates.
Well, I think for right now, how soon do we have to let them know?
Registration is open currently.
To when?
Registration is now open.
And when does it close off?
That, I would have to research that, but if we don't cancel in a certain time period, we do not get the money back.
Okay, so if we table this to next meeting, is that too late? In your...
For hotels near the convention center, yes.
I was thinking Laguna Hills. I like it up there, but I mean, it's close enough.
So you're going?
Sounds like it.
No, I don't want to go.
Okay, put him down.
No, don't put me down. I am done with those meetings. So we'll just probably pass unless Daryl wants to show...
Registration ends Friday, September 22.
Oh, September 27.
But as this clerk mentioned, the hotels go faster than the registrations.
Well, if anybody changes their mind, we can make a rush order here and...
I can consult the defense attorneys and see if there's a chance it might go away, and I'll communicate that to Chief Mayberry if it looks like I'm able to go.
Okay.
And I have to think about that, too. I have a prior event that I am committed with the Law Association down south, so I'll get that.
Okay, so it looks like we will make a decision, which will be later.
Then you're going to be way away from that convention center because that's what happened last year. It was like a 20, 25-minute, 30-minute drive to get there, so the quicker you can get in there, the better off you're going to be.
We could commute from Vegas.
You can do whatever you need to do. I'd be saying that's what happened last year.
Okay, so for now, we'll just table the event and with no decision being made. Do we need to act for public comment on going to League of Cities?
Given that you've taken no action, I don't think you do, but you always have that discretion to do.
I will let that one go. Last item on the list is item E. Can we have an intermission first? No, just kidding. Just kidding. How about Daryl? Is he up online because he wanted something to say? Okay, so if he's not there, we're going to move to item E. Facilities by motion, council will consider Resolution 25-2025, declaring 150 Alamo Avenue as surplus property. Can I get a staff report from...
So what's before you is a declaration declaring the building exempt under the Surplus Land Act. Certain requirements of public properties are required to be offered, to be renovated into low-income housing. This does not meet those requirements, both in size or in any adjoining property. This would allow the council to declare it a surplus for potential future sale without having to go through the 60-day posting, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, normally, anytime a city sells property, if it's not exempt, they have to offer it...
We're like watching, seeing things that we can't hear. We can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
We can't hear any of you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So I'm just trying to explain, the Surplus Land Act requires that when any public agency sells property, they have to first provide notice to other governmental agencies and housing sponsors, affordable housing developers, and at least offer to enter into negotiations. But this property, based on our research, is exempt from that process. So it does, anytime an agency wants to sell exempt property, like this particular parcel, it just needs to notify the HCD, which is the Housing Community Development Department of the State of California, that this property is exempt, and then after 30 days, the city would be able to sell property. By way of background.
Any other comments?
Well, a little background on the building. The city leased that building in 2015 as part of... We rented that, leased that for a space for the local library. Beginning in 2021, an entity showed some interest in developing that property into something else. The then-city manager was in talks with them. Those talks continued through 2022. In 2023, the city received $120,000 from the pending dissolved Weed Friends of the Library. Then we added $150,000 to that to purchase the building for a total of $270,000. It's a just-under-4,100-square-foot building, renovated in 19... sometime between 1980 and 1985. The city, then-city manager maintained contact with that entity that was interested in either leasing or developing that property all the way through May of 2024. When I became the acting city manager in June of... there's a lot of facts here. In June of 2024, I believe it was July, I received a phone call from that same entity saying they still had some interest. We were able to work out a deal, a lease agreement, to where they could utilize some of the unutilized space up on the upper floor. That required us to repair some heating and air conditioning issues that existed when we purchased the building in 2023. They were identified by the appraisal. Other items identified by that appraisal are the siding and paint. The city's put very little money into that building in that timeframe as far as maintenance, just general maintenance for dating and repair. The council gave me discretion to... I advised them that there was potential interest in the building without telling anybody on the council what actually was going to occur. I was given discretion to go ahead and speak further with them. That was a closed-session item. I believe I saw a representative of that entity here tonight. I was hoping they would come up and give a vision. Again, there's no offer on the building. They just have a vision for the building, and they may not be the only person interested in the building, but they are somebody that has contacted the city. So, um, I believe Shannon Garrick is here tonight. I'd just like her to share a brief, briefly share the vision that the, uh, Mountain Valleys Health Center has for that building and why discussion has been had since two thousand twenty-one for that property.
Come forward.
Uh, thank you for having me tonight. So Mountain Valleys Health Centers, uh, became part of the Weed community in two thousand and eighteen. It was a, a short, uh, offer for us to, an invitation, uh, in early January that we got to, um, take over the practice that Dr. Sternberg had for so long with the Shasta Regional Medical Group. So in, uh, June of two thousand eighteen, uh, we came into town and, and picked up the medical services. And I think you guys are very fortunate to have some really good quality providers here. We operate with, um, Dr. Sarah Gilman Short, uh, Dr. Eric Benhouten, Joshua Cure, who is a physician assistant, Kate West, who's been with us since the very beginning, since we arrived. She's a family nurse practitioner, and Megan Hoy, who is also a family nurse practitioner. Uh, with that being said, we added behavioral health services shortly after we came. Um, we have a counselor, Eric, um, Monty, who's a psychologist, and he operates through, uh, telemedicine. And we also have an associate clinical social worker, uh, Donna Kenny, who just joined the, um, community here in Weed. So, uh, we have really great provider staff. We've been doing a lot of great things. Uh, we are currently renovating the Weed Health Center, and we have about a one-point-three-million-dollar project going on right now. Uh, we've gutted the building. It will be all-new electrical, plumbing, uh, HVAC. Everything's going to be new, and we're really excited to get back in that building to provide further services. Just with time and, and seeing the, the, the community and the needs in the community and the people that we take care of in the community, uh, we, uh, I'm kind of a visionary, so, uh, I've been with Mountain Valleys for, um, almost thirty years. I'm an RN, and, um, I took this role as CEO about six years ago. And with that, my mind just kind of goes crazy when I see that there's a need and, and something that we can do to, to help. We have volunteer, volunteer board of directors, and you have, um, two community members from Weed on that board. So Kevin Charter, who is a member of this community, and Janet Blevins. Uh, we also have Ed Stokes out of Mount Shasta, who is also on the board. So with board approval, I have been given permission to kind of explore and further, um, discuss uh, some of the needs in the community. And right after we got here, the pharmacy shutdown, which many of you are aware of, which has been very frustrating for many of us, especially providers trying to get patients' prescriptions, and even though Mount Shasta's not that far away, there's still struggles with that. And so, um, with the closure of Rite Aid, um, happening, there really has been, uh, uh, you know, on our strategic plan, we have had pharmacy on there for the last three years. And so with the, um, the closure of Rite Aid, it kind of prompted the vision to come a little quicker than maybe what we anticipated. So, uh, that building is something that I started exploring with Tim Rundell when he was here. And I reached out and talked to the bank who owned the building at the time, and then, poof, it was, um, sold to the city. So I'm glad it was local, but still hoping that somehow we could collaborate and get services in there. So the vision that I have for the building would really truly to bring pharmacy services into Weed again and under Mountain Valleys umbrella. There's enough space in there. Uh, with that, uh, Mountain Valleys provides dentistry services in three of our communities, so we operate in seven different communities. Doors, Tulley Lake, Big Valley, Fall River, Bernie, Weed and Mount Shasta. And, um, we'd like to extend dental services over here, uh, for our patients. So the building has enough space that we could operate pharmacy, dentistry, and even further our behavioral health services that we already have. That's the vision that I have. Um, I know many of you here, and I, I, I'm a familiar face to some of you, maybe not to all of you, but I have, go way back with the Weed community, and I'm excited to be part of, um, having some healthcare services here. And I feel very confident that, um, we can sustain and, um, bring more to the community. And so I hope that the library doesn't see us as like, we still want to collaborate, and we're not here to take or move the library out. We just want to be part of the community, and it'd be really nice to be able to offer the medical services right in that little triangular area where we have physical therapy next door through dignity and, um, medical and behavioral health, dental and pharmacy.
Could you expand on that concept of unifying those three things you just said?
Sure. Sure. So, um, just, uh, getting pharmacy off the ground is a little bit of a lift because Mountain Valleys doesn't currently have a pharmacy. I've been in some discussions with different pharmacists. Uh, we have, um, proper DEAs and, and with all of our clinic sites, and, um, licensing of a pharmacy would take up to six months, so it's a long process. It's not something that will happen overnight. So if there are anybody out there who thinks it's going to open tomorrow, it won't. Uh, we've been trying to figure out how we could, um, quickly move because time is of the essence with the Rite Aid closure and trying to capture, um, some of those clientele. But the pharmacy has many things. There, there's a code for their, the, um, the pharmacy law. We're fortunate that we have some experience on our team. We have some resources that we can utilize with other community self-help, community health centers who have pharmacies. Um, we've reached out. We've been talking with, um, different ones about it. So it is not something that will happen fast, but, um, we are committed. And we'll do what the community wants, but we are definitely not here to do harm.
If, if, if you're done answering questions, the people, actually, we don't want to direct the questions towards Shannon. Uh, if you have questions besides that, the questions would come to the council, and we could entertain them from here. I think, thank you, Shannon. I think you've enlightened the council. Hopefully, you've enlightened the public a little bit on some of the intents of the building. And we do appreciate that, uh, help. Thank you.
So I hope that, I know that's not going to clear up everybody's questions, but this wasn't taken lightly. It's not, um, a discussion that was had just randomly either. These, this has been ongoing since two thousand twenty-one, as far back as I can see. And the discussion about the library being solely for the library, that was never part of the deal as well. Um, I know that because I spoke with the community center and staff has also remembers. Prior to my tenure as the acting, there was discussions about moving the library then. We discussed about the potential of moving the library into the, what we refer to as the new wing of the city hall. That's the piece that's out here around the plaza. I had a conversation in my office with the former city manager about what I thought it would take to do that and the hurdles. There's quite a few. There was discussions with prior administration with the community center about moving the building over there. Measurements were gone over and taken to see if we, how much of the library would fit into the, to one of the rooms. So this isn't new. This isn't something that we just came up with. It's just something that came to my attention when I became the acting, and I have just moved it forward from, from there. If I can bring three things, three new things to the community that they need and still have the library, that was my intent. Four things are better than one. That's the way I look at it. If we can have the library and still have, and have a dentist, mental health services, and a pharmacy, which is the most requested thing that I've had in the last five years within this town, why don't we get a pharmacy? That's all the, the discussion was about, and that's all it is right now. It's only a vision. There's no offer to purchase the property as of yet. Uh, they're a nonprofit. They have to figure out how they're going to fund that. And that's where it's at. Uh, as far as the money, the hundred and twenty thousand dollars, the discussion among staff was never to absorb that into the city. It was how do we get that into some, either speaking with finance, either to a fund. Ideally, we'd like to have a five oh one C three reformed, uh, to oversee. We don't currently have an acting Friends of the Library that's working regularly with the library. That is what we would like. That was actually suggested by the Director of Finance, um, a year and a half ago, and it fell on deaf ears with, uh, library. So that's our vision, is to both have new and more services, but also to keep the library going. Uh, but again, I don't think the intent of that city was ever, of the city was ever to make that entire building the library. Uh, when we, when we first took it over, uh, back in two thousand fifteen, there was legal services in there and recovery services from the Bowles fire, so.
Okay, so I will start off the discussion, if, if you guys don't mind. Can you hear me okay out there? Barely? Really? How's that? Okay. I'll start off the discussion with the permission of my fellow councilmen, council people. The issue tonight regarding this building is the intent of the city council. The city council's intent on exploring different uses for the property. And that's been explained already. Those issues on the agenda, the issue on the agenda is reclassifying the building as surplus, surplus property, which allows us to move forward in that process. We need a buyer that is a better, will use the, the building and utilize the building in a better way. The city's conversa- let me finish. I would like to finish and without any side commentary, please. Uh, I would give you the same respect. The city's conversation with the library have been to relocate the library if the right buyer comes along. The city has been very specific and deliberate in our intentions of the Weed library. So let me repeat, the Weed, City of Weed is not abandoning the library. The City of Weed is looking to repurpose and or sell the building and move the library to a different location. The City of Weed, um, has moved the library under the direction of the city manager over two years ago, possibly longer. The librarians are city employees. The city has asked the library to form a nonprofit, as has been explained already. And, uh, again, I would repeat what, uh, our acting city manager has said, is that it's fall- fallen on deaf ears. It takes an organization to manage a buil- a business such as the library. Without one, it becomes under the direction of the city because there's not many other options there. In fact, there are no other options. The city currently pays payroll, overhead costs, and purchases of the equipment they use. The city paid over two hundred and seventy thousand during the last, two hundred and eighty thousand during the last three years from Measure O sales tax. The city in addition paid a hundred and sixty thousand to purchase the building and apply for a grant to upgrade access to the dis- to, for the disabled. I think you all know that information, which has been passed around readily. The Friends of the Library gave the city a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to, to reestablish the operations after the Bowles fire. I don't sure if purchase of building was included other than to reestablish the operations. The city, the library didn't own a building before. They, they don't own a building now. The building is now the city's. Some people have complained to the Siskiyou County Library. Well, let me give you some background on the Siskiyou La- County Library. They paid for books and the internet and the phones. Thank you. Uh, the city has paid over eight hundred thousand dollars over the last fourteen years to support this library. It's a significant number. If people complaining in other, other towns, and I've seen a few on the internet, take a look at their budgets and see how much they've spent, and I will tell you, it's not eight hundred thousand dollars. I will guarantee you, I see a librarian out in the audience now that I'm familiar with, and I know what that, what their library takes in. Since we've established, reestablished the operation, the Friends of the Library gave the money to the City of Weed in twenty-two or twenty-three, wasn't it?
I believe it was, the purchase was made finalized in September of two thousand twenty-three. I'm not sure when the money actually, there, it could have actually come after, after the purchase. It might have been in the early, I want to say, maybe, maybe is there a friend of a library here that, that could, or former friend that could, uh, clarify, but it might have been January of two thousand twenty-four. I think there was a, it was an after the fact.
Either way, it took over seven years to get the money out of the Friends of the Library. Not sure what that speaks of. It was, it was, I will agree, to help purchase the building with their approval and spent according to its purpose. That's kind of all I have to say, but I don't want to make sure that, I was here in two thousand eleven when the Siskiyou library system abandoned all twelve cities in the, in the Siskiyou County. The City of Weed stepped up then. We're stepping up now. We're not abandoning anybody. We are just relocating so that we can provide better opportunity for our citizens on the current building and relocating the, the library to a location where they can make a new home. That's all I've got.
I have a question for, um, Justin. We have some kind of agreement with the county?
There's a MOU with the county, Siskiyou County Library for operations of the library within Weed.
And what, what is that in care?
Essentially, as stated by Mayor Protem, uh, that they, they provide insurance for the books, IT services, and the books. Uh, we cover most of the overhead, including either salaries or volunteers. And I just want to clarify, the eight hundred thousand, I believe, is actually in eight years, not fourteen years. Yeah, um, our budget last year was a hundred and two thousand dollars for the library, and you threw out some numbers. You can look them up online. Wyrica's, uh, line item budget for the library is sixteen thousand dollars a year. Dunsmere's is a little bit, they're, it's not as easy to read as it used to be. They have something similar to our Measure O, where they get a general fund tax support, where they have, the library has asked for it. That's, I believe they gave thirty-two thousand last year out of that, and then the city itself gave sixteen thousand dollars. So around, you know, roughly forty-seven thousand, whatever, um, forty-eight. Aetna, uh, their, their budget states that they give five thousand dollars a year, so that's a big difference of almost a hundred thousand dollars in what we're spending per year. That's only because we're not supported by either a Friends or a, uh, five oh one C three. It, it, it takes a community, you know, when you come in there, it's just like, it's like the museum. The museum gets some money out of, out of the, you know, Measure O, but ultimately, they have a, call it a tip jar when you go in there, you know, when you go by, you throw in a couple bucks. It's how, helps keep them, keeps the lights on. But, um, again, it's not, it's not that we don't want a library. We have to balance, you just heard that the, the roof on here was, is probably with change orders, it's going to be five hundred thousand. That's, that's one of many things that's not wrong with this building. We had estimates as high as seven fifty to a million to finish, or not to finish, to refurbish this building. So the city, like all other cities, is struggling with money. We want to keep services going. We have to figure out ways to do that, so.
Further on the question, though, what, with the county, do we have a signed agreement with them? Is that a negotiated, or what is that?
Well, I don't believe it's been negotiated in some time. It just seems to be cookie cutter resign ever. I mean-
And when is it up?
It's due in June, but you do have, as a council, you have a, a thirty-day out, opt-out option within that. So there's ten months left on it. There's a thirty-day-
And what would that mean if we, I'm not saying we are or anything, but I want to know the options. What would happen if you didn't re- re-sign it?
They would come and get their books, I guess, so.
Well, we don't want that, but we definitely need to do some negotiation with it. And for everyone out there, I'm a complete supporter of the library. The day I was elected and sat on that chair over there, that was one of the first things I said is that I support the library, and I still do, and I still will. I grew up in a library, like a lot of- the library. And I still do and I still will. I grew up in a library, like a lot of folks that are my age, so I understand that. But there's also an opportunity to move them into another place that's going to be central in Weed. And I'm for that. And that way, not only are we, the library stays, we're going to get something else that's going to improve the necessities for the citizens in Weed. So I can speak for myself, and I'm pretty sure I could speak for Barry, everybody up here, that we all support the library. And I just think there's a lot of misinformation that was given prior to this. The, the public wasn't aware of. And we have put money into that place. The library, as far as I know, doesn't even have a budget. The budget comes, do they have a budget?
They do have a budget. When I came in and again, and as the acting.
Did they have a budget prior to that?
They did. They were going to be over the budget, which required me to make some adjustments to keep them within the, the approved budget.
Okay.
You know, I.
And that's something just like any department head would have to make that budget to meet the needs.
Well, yeah. So they were, so again, we, we're responsible for the, we have the paid employees. The library was, they don't fall under any department, so they don't have a department head, per se. So there's, you know, each one of us is a department head. We run our employees. They fell under the city manager. There was not much guidance in keeping them in their budget. When I came in, they were afforded benefits that no other city departments, part-time employees were afforded. That's about what was putting them over budget. They were receiving retirement and insurance. So.
And I want to, you know, give a shout out to the libraries. They have a very nice, it's a very nice library. I'll not take that away from them. And I know the support because it's right here. But unfortunately, when you get out of the council, you have to make decisions that some folks aren't going to be happy with. But I think this is more than a fair medium. If it even decided that it sold, if somebody wants to buy that, I will take two things for one. And that's just how I feel, regardless if anyone doesn't agree with it or doesn't accept it. I would rather have a, a library that's here than a library that they come up and take the books and then they can figure out where you guys were supposed to go. That would be wrong to do. So my, my support is, from what I've heard, but it's also 100% support for the library.
Where is this new building to be?
Well, that question there, you would have to further in. There's several, there's two or three places that, that I know that has been talked about. And I, and I think, I don't know if there's negotiations.
Could I interrupt on that?
What's that?
Can I interrupt on that?
Sure you can.
So for obvious reasons and to the best benefit of the library, disclosing the locations we're talking about is not beneficial to the city, obviously because we're still in negotiations. What I can tell you is everybody's talking about moving the library. When this discussion first started, every single one of these city council members talked about what the current building is missing, that the library needs, and where we can acquire a building that can meet those needs. So as far as the movement is concerned, we're aware that the library needs more parking. I think you would agree that you would love more people to show up and to have a place to park. I think you would like a building that accommodates those who have accessibility needs. We're aware of that. What we're trying to do is acquire a building that is better than what you have. And to be able to supply it in the center of Weed and also supply the members of the City of Weed with the medical needs that are available. So if there's any public comment as to why, as a city council member, I shouldn't agree to move the library to a better building than what they're in for what they need, and deny the medical services to the community, I would love to hear those comments. But ultimately, if that's the goal of this city council, I think that's the real question for comment to the community is tell us a reason why we shouldn't move the, the library to a better building, using the $120,000 and making sure that it is earmarked for the library that was given by the Friends of the Library, and why we should deny a nonprofit medical facility for coming in here and providing goods to our community that are vital and necessary. And I think the reason why we won't have any public comment is there is no downside to that proposal.
So I just want to say something real quick. So I've, I've received that question a lot. What's the plan? I haven't actually gone out and spoken officially to anybody that owns properties. And that being because I don't have an offer on the building yet. I don't see a need to go out and start getting price quotes until I have an offer on the building. And I don't have that. All this does is declare it as surplus and potentially could sell down the road.
Are you working with the people that run the library and working on the library now to design or put specifications for the new building?
No. Again, we haven't even reached the point where we've thought about moving forward with a plan because I'm not going, again, there are a couple buildings I have unofficially looked at. But again, in the time that I looked at those, they've been rented out. And I don't know what the estimated time plan is for Mountain Valley's health. So I don't want.
Does anybody have a vision board if you've never even had a price? Do you even know what it's worth or what the appraisal would be on it?
Yeah, we've gone beyond public.
If you have something to say, you'll have to come to the podium, please.
Do you want to open it up for public comment? So.
As part of public comment, yes.
They want to engage, but, and I don't mind that, but we need open public comments.
But I think one at a time would be a better approach. So you have a question? And if you wouldn't mind repeating that, and then we can address it.
Sure. My name is Dean Davis. I think we're drifting from what is actually on the agenda tonight, and that's declaring this building as surplus property. And it seems like it's inherently not in that category at this point. I think to be able to justify declaring it as surplus property, you've got to have a plan for the current occupants in place. And I hear over and over, there is no plan yet. You're looking everywhere. It's on the radar.
So hold on, Dean.
You want to do it, but it's, but it's not happening.
Let me ask, answer your question.
Okay.
The city doesn't quite work like the
Like the law says.
private, private business world of any sort. This is a preliminary step that allows us to move forward for the sale. Without this step, then we can't move forward.
Right.
So we can't move forward until we do this so that we can make a plan for the future.
I think.
I don't know, it kind of is cattywampus. I will give you that. And it's just the way things run on, on a, on a city council or on any government process that I'm aware of. Am I right or wrong? Okay.
Well, it says it, it's, it's not necessary for the city's use. And it's, it's obvious that right now it certainly is.
It's not what?
I don't, I don't think, well, it's just, I'm just pulling it from the law, what it says. And it, and you have to have, it implies that you'd have to have a plan for whatever it is you're using it for now. When it was purchased less than two years ago, I'm sure it was critical at that point. It was necessary property. You wouldn't make the purchase if it wasn't. Well.
We have a plan and that plan is to relocate. We won't go into any more detail than that because it, it impinges upon the, our ability to purchase or to lease other property.
Well, right. And I would think you would have to have that plan in place to be able to declare that surplus to enable the starting of the process of selling it. You sell the surplus property, not the undeclared, not yet surplus property. I, it just doesn't seem to make sense to me.
I'm sorry it doesn't make sense. And sometimes that's what happens with government.
I have another, another quick comment. It says that under the exempt surplus land code, this actually is adjacent to an area that's used for open space, which is the Abner Weed statue area out here, commonly used as open space for the community. That's one of the stipulations that it, it shouldn't be adjacent to public used places like that, open space. It's also pretty close to half acre, you know, which is another stipulation. But apparently, if the survey is correct, it's barely under a half acre. So I think it meets that criteria. But it just, it bothers me. It seems like it's cart in front of the horse. You know, that you have to have it be actually surplus property before you can sell it or consider selling it to someone else.
And that's exactly what we're going to be doing. Or if the vote goes our way. Is there any comment from, from you, David, at all on that?
I mean, I can address the open space issue if you, if you'd like me to.
Didn't you want him to address an open space issue?
I'd like to see you to address some of the issues that the law requires.
So the, the exemption, the reason why it's being declared as exempt surplus property is laid out in the resolution. So as you mentioned, ha, less than half acre. And you can't be contiguous to land that is zoned as open space. So I believe the Abner Weed Plaza is part of City Hall, which is likely zoned public, as a public. So, so that would fall outside of the, so, so it would fit the exemption.
Okay. And how about the issue? Is there anything to be said about us declaring this as surplus property?
No, I think Mayor Pro Tem, you, you described it correctly. Under the Surplus Land Act, the city cannot even go into negotiations to even discuss selling property until it has been declared either exempt surplus or surplus. So it is, perhaps the language that the legislature requires us to use is not the clearest and may have caused some misunderstandings. But I believe your description was accurate. So this has to be the first step in that process.
Okay. Yeah. Well, we have another, our last party of, of the night is on, on the main screen. Good evening, Daryl.
Good evening. Apologies for the delay. Had, did I pick up some trouble today?
So I don't know how long you've been listening, if you want to chide in on anything.
I missed the staff report, part of the presentation. So I'm not sure what all has been, has been covered or hasn't been covered.
Okay. So, so we're, right now, we're into public reports or public comment? Is there anybody else that wants to give us any public comment? We have some cards. Hold on a second. Who do we want to call up?
Suzanne Clark.
Suzanne Clark, you're up front. Thanks, Karen.
I'm Susie Clark. I am the library manager for Montague, but I'm speaking on my own as myself. I'm not speaking for Montague. I think the concern is that, and I appreciate everything you've said. I've learned a lot from all of you. But I think the concern is that in the long run, the library is going to get short shrift, that they're going to end up in an area that's a lot smaller. They're going to not be able to get the services that they do now. And I think that's everybody's biggest concern. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen O'Quinn at the Dunsmere Library. Can you hear me now?
You bet, Jen.
Dunsmere Librarian. And I wanted to comment that moving a library is a major production. Why couldn't the Mountain Valley Health Center be moved to one of the other available areas that you talked about? Leave the library where it is. They definitely need to have a nonprofit board. I was surprised to hear that they don't. I didn't know that. And I think that it's, you guys are a little bit backwards here. Let Mountain Valleys have some of these other properties and leave the library where it is.
That'll be enough. Oh, we'll clear the room. I'm not really fooling with hand clapping. Thank you very much. Thank you for your comment. I would say from my standpoint, are we allowed to discuss the public comment or just listen?
I mean, I think it might be more efficient to let everybody have their three minutes and then we can bring that back.
So any more comments?
John Morton.
I appreciate the, the comments from the, the council and all the other people here. It's made things a little bit clearer for me. I understand how government works. It works more for themselves than the people. And looking around and knowing the librarians, it's an awesome place. It's one of the best libraries in the county. And I agree that it should stay there and that the other hospital services have the ability to purchase a different place, you know, where the library doesn't. It will end up being in a smaller location. I don't see a location downtown on the main street that would really fit it with parking and all that. And I would like to be assured that a place is found before the sale of the property. They need a space. They need to make plans. They can't be hit and say, okay, next week, we're going to be, you have to move out because we got it, we got this. It has to move with, along with the public. And more discussions. This just came bam, just like that, you know? And everything was going good. And everything can go good. I love the fact that you liked the library. I know you grew, we all grew up with them. They are very, very important for the health and the intelligence of your community. So I think that there's, should be some more discussion, maybe put it on the agenda one other time. Now that people know where your positions are and what you are tied to, how you, how you have to go through your motions. I think they may understand more tonight, but this is all new. This is all stirring up minds for what, two weeks or something? You know, give them a chance to figure this thing out and come and present something to you. Maybe a chance to figure out how they're going to get exempt from taxes and so forth. So they can present that to you. This is too quick, too fast. And the pharmacy won't come next week. If it comes, that's going to take time. And all that time is going to be, these people are going to be all upset about why we didn't have enough time to figure out the process, you know, for themselves. There's more people here than there is on the council. That's a lot of, lot of thinking going on out here. So I appreciate all the people that are here, especially the librarians. They are so, so good at their job. Thank you.
So I'm going to call up the next person, Devon. Hopefully I pronounced that one correctly. Devon Hanson.
Well, good evening. My name is Devon Hanson. I'm a volunteer librarian here at Weed. I have been a volunteer for over two years now. Why do I volunteer? Because I believe in this community. This community of Weed and its surroundings has some absolutely amazing people. Why do I spend my time? Because of these people. I could be doing plenty of other things, not being a volunteer librarian. I don't get paid. If anything, I'm probably losing money. But I believe in this library and I believe in this building. This building is so multifaceted. One of the big things that we really have that's just absolutely amazing is the space for the children and space for the adults. So we have summer school programs, as we've had the last two years, building a good rapport with Weed Elementary. We have had TK through eighth grade children come to our library to be read to, to work on their summer school programs. We have brought. read to, to work on their summer school programs. We have brought in people like Dr. Bill Hurt from COS. We've brought in other doctors to give presentations. These children are learning a lot. And one of the great things with having the children's side versus all connected to the adult's side is the fact that the children can be children. When mothers bring in their children, they can go over there, they don't have to worry about their children being too loud. They don't have to worry about their children's are trying to study, they're not getting in the way of the adults. The adults really appreciate having adult section that's very quiet. You know, when you're in the adult's side, it's, you know, so quiet, it's very peaceful. We get a lot of feedback from both the parents with children and the adults, how much they like having the children's side and how much they like having the adult's side. The library, if we're to lose this building, would really be a detriment. It is so set up and so beloved. The way it's set up with our book sale, to the children's side, to the study areas, to the adult's side, to our mystery vaults. We have people coming in there for job interviews, we have people doing tests for schooling. We have people that maybe have accessibility issues and prefer their own space when they come in there. And so they have requests, places where they can be away from other people, use the computers. We have so much space in there that is absolutely utilized. This building is an absolute must for this community. To take that away from the community is really just like a slap in the face. People are really supporting this. From the time we sent out our petition last Friday, I have nine hundred and forty-two signatures in my hand. Many of these people are here today, watching us right now. And I'm sure this number is just going to keep going up as people find out what's going on. Especially for the fact that it's so abstract that we're going to relocate the library, but where are we going to relocate it to? There is no plan, and that's not comforting to anybody. That's like saying we're going to sell your house, but we don't know what you're going to do with you. We need to have a plan for the library. If it's going to be moved, it needs to be moved into a comparable space. People need the safe parking, they need to love the parking lot, they love the open atmosphere, they love the windows, they just love the whole thing. And I'm sure we'll continue to keep getting support. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next on the list is Larry Culligan.
Hello, uh, thank you. That's my first meeting I've been to. I appreciate all the, uh, information you shared. We, um, just learned about this a couple of days ago. I, uh, I'm very supportive of the library. We went one, I guess my biggest fear, and I, I appreciate the vision for Mountain Valley to try to expand in this community. I think that's, is a good thing. If we could have everything, that's the, the, the best answer altogether. And I heard you say you were supportive of the library, I believe that. My fear is that, you know, we sell the building, things go, oh, the other deal won't work through, and it, we don't have a library. I guess, can you guarantee that if it does get sold, there will be a library in Weed? And it will be, will happen, it won't just like, well, it's going to not work out, it's going to not cost, we got to do this first and then it gets lost. I guess that's my fear, and I guess I'd wish, welcome your comments on that. Thank you.
Marilyn Harrington. Marilyn Harrington? Okay, come on up Marilyn.
I'm a former member of the Weed Friends of the Library, and, um, we just want to reiterate what a disservice it would be to move the library or get rid of the library, which I know that's not the intent. But it's a very important part of this community. It serves a lot of people. And I think we really need to keep it in any way we can. And the location that it's in, I helped paint that building when we first moved there. I laid carpet in that building when we first moved there. And when Shelley Green was still the librarian. So it has a lot of important memories for me. And, um, I just would like to see it stay where it is, because it's a great place. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dorinda Thompson.
I'm struggling up here. Hi, my name is Dorinda Thompson, and I actually live in Gazelle. We do not have a library in Gazelle. We do not have anything. But I come to the Weed Library probably once a week. I so appreciate the help I get from the staff. They actually find books for me that they think I would like and put them on hold. And it is a wonderful, it is the most involved library that I have ever participated in, and I've been going to libraries since I was five, and I'm eighty, so that's a lot of years. And if you do move the library, which I think would be very sad, think about how long things would be closed. I mean, you can't just pick it up and move it overnight. You gotta find a place, clean it up, get it ready. They're happy where they are, they have it. And the Mountain Valley people said, well, we don't want to, we don't want to push the library out, but it certainly sounds like that's what would happen. Thank you.
Leslie Thorpe or Tharp? Problem with that one.
Good evening, Council and Members. Thank you for letting me talk today. I appreciate it. I do have a question. You were talking about, and this is to the, um, Mr. Mayberry. You were talking about the thirty day, maybe not thirty day notice? And versus the no sixty day posting? Am I, am I recalling that correctly? My question is, if it does go to the exempt prop, surplus property in thirty days, if I'm understanding that correctly, does a public get notified of that as well?
So, and again, this is probably a question for Council, but I believe what we're, the sixty days is particular that it has to be a notification to a state agency that works with affordable housing. What we, what we are saying is exempt from that requirement, notify them that we have this property and for it to be, for lack of a better term, marketed to somebody who might develop it for that purpose. This is just saying it is surplus property and it's available to anybody immediately.
Let me introduce myself properly. My name is Leslie Tharp, and I am the library, my name is Leslie Tharp, and I am the library manager and coordinator for the Fort Jones and Aetna Branches in Scott Valley. Thank you very much for all of the clarification that you've given, uh, to the public and the citizens of Weed and the librarians that are here to support the Weed Library today. In lieu of the, let me look at my notes, I'm sorry. Of the resolution that is on the ballot, we appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I'd like to just read a few things, not everything, that's a filibuster, so I will not address everything. Libraries are vital, and, and you know this already, I just want to reiterate it. Libraries are vital to a healthy democrat, democracy by providing resources, spaces, and programs that foster civic engagement and informed participation. We are no longer passive keepers of books, rather, we've evolved to become facilitators of information and lifelong learning opportunities with an emphasis on service. We serve as neutral platforms for information access, community, community dialogue, and voter education, helping citizens make informed decisions. We do not just hold dusty books, we do more than storytime for children. We are relevant and we are valuable still in the age of AI and ChatGPT, iPhones and twenty-four hour news cycles. We are, in essence, the poor man's, uh, college, and are free to anyone that walks in the door, but you already know that. Sir, you pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem, I'm sorry if I didn't address you correctly.
That's okay.
You had mentioned that the county library only provides IT, IT books and, insurance, but they also provide a lot more than that. If you visit, is that my three minutes?
I'll give you thirty seconds.
Thank you. Uh, if you visit our online portal, you'll see that the county library also provides to all twelve branches very, um, relevant services to the public that, that is online. We have, um, Encyclopedia Britannica that is leveled for students. There's newspapers, there's a law library that we offer as well. And so, um, it's not just the IT portion. Our people work very hard. There's only three, and there's only three, um, staff for our whole library system employed by the county. And they do a really, really great job in getting the things that we need. So I appreciate your time and thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
That, I didn't mean to diminish the IT portion, I was looking at it from a budgetary purpose.
Correct.
I appreciate the IT services.
I understand and I appreciate that, thank you.
Rita Brown.
Okay, well, this is impromptu, I didn't know I was going to speak or not. Is Rita Brown? What else do I need to give?
That's close enough, I have your address.
You got my address, yes, I have the little card. Okay. Uh, just to say, the library's been important all my life. I am a college professor, I've been teaching at COS for over twenty years. And I am very supportive of both the COS library and also especially the Weed Public Library. I'm a regular patron, my sister as well. And the library, Weed Library is a very, very valuable resource for the community. It's the heart of the community. We gather and talk, meet, socialize, say hi to one another, and call, okay. I've also been informed that the Weed Elementary School does not have a library. I find that appalling. All my years in going through grammar school, elementary school, junior high, you name it, high school, all had libraries, and this was in California, okay? I've also been informed by the librarian that the teachers bring the students, walk them down from the elementary school, down the hill to the library here in Weed. It's very close, accessible, walkable. And definite need, I can't imagine an elementary school without a public library. I mean, without a school library, okay? Um, I think the Weed Library is a beautiful, well-built, well, it's established. Like you've been mentioned by Devon, the adult section is very quiet, very nice. Children have the other section, which is great. I know Bill Hurt talks there often, he's again a colleague at the College of Siskiyou. I've been there, I've worked with him. And they're supportive as well. And so I'd say that the Weed Library should stay where it is, keep its location. Some things that were brought up that said it would be a better place somewhere else, one thing was mentioned about more parking. I've been there years, obviously, and I've never been able not to find a place to park in the lot in front of the library. It's always been available. And it is also not too far away across, there's a post office in the library park, there's parking there. You can do that, but I've never had to. All the years I've lived here and been teaching, I've never had a parking at the front of the library. Accessibility needs. Okay, accessibility needs are just super at the Weed Public Library. I have any problem? I mean, I have, I get stiff knees at times, I use my stick to have to get around at times. No accessibility, accessibility, accessibility problems with that, okay? The Weed Public Library is super on that. And also, as a person mentioned, that they were eighty years old and they'd been visiting the library for, since they were five years old. Well, I'm sixty-nine, and I can remember riding my bicycle, the old flat tire bicycle, you know, coaster brakes, to the library, which is probably about a mile away. I grew up in Saratoga, California, okay? And I remember filling that basket full of books and using bungee cords to tie them and secure them, and having the back uphill to go home with all that treasure of books. So I am very supportive, I love public libraries, and God thank you and hope you do make the right decision.
Thank you. Sophie Larson.
You good?
Yeah, hold on, make sure I. My name is, okay, hello, my name is Sophie Larson and I'm seven years old. The Weed Library is a very important part of our community. I love the librarians and have been visiting libraries since I was not quite two years old, when my grandma would push my stroller there for storytime. My favorite book is The Littlest Cherry, and I probably checked it out thirty times, over and over. I visit the library year round and have enjoyed the reading programs like the International Passports and Reading Train. The librarians know me and always have a new book picked out for me whenever I return. It makes me happy that the librarians have hung up my artwork on the wall, and I enjoy seeing art by other children and students on the wall as well. I'm very concerned that if the building is sold, the library will close. I don't believe you will reopen it if it closes, so please, don't take the library away.
Uh, I'm going to use the rest of her time, uh, to say that, um, I think that this issue was handled very poorly. It seems to me that you guys wanted to do this very quietly and without really telling anybody, and you were just hoping to just get it through. And as soon as it came to light that this was going to happen, it was all hands on deck for damage control. I was at the library the other day, where Mayberry was hovering in the parking lot, coming in harassing the librarians and telling them not to tell anybody about this. He came in and, uh, we had a conversation as well, where he did not reassure me about the future of the library at all, but did, um, employ police intimidation tactics, bringing up irrelevant details about my family and about my business, uh, which I think is wildly inappropriate. I also am concerned that if the library is going to move, it's going to be a lengthy process with, you know, an indefinite closure and, uh, that the library may or may not open again. If, uh, if you're moving it, and it's going to be somewhere central, I'm concerned that Main Street, uh, is full of vice businesses and therefore not appropriate for a library where children frequent. So, um, please, uh, let us know if you have a more appropriate home for it than that. Thank you.
I'm out of cards. Sure. We all, one more.
I'm Deb Purdue, and I'm one of the three county employees for the Siski, I'm one of the three county employees for Siskiyou County.
What was your name?
My name is Deborah Purdue. We just finished a historical display for the Siskiyou County Library, and, um, what we've found is that libraries do survive. They do go into different places. But what I would like to say about the Weed Library, researching from the Bull's Fire, I think that this current location where they're at is much more than square footage. This is them reclaiming a space, and they've made it very special to keep and restore that. So I hope you would just consider that for them. And we'll do our best at the county to support that in, in the city of Weed. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've had enough public comment. We were supposed to do cards, and I, I don't want to cut anybody off, but it seems to just be rinse and repeat at this point. We, we're loud, we're loud and clear, we hear you. Do you have something to add to the conversation? I mean, add to it, okay, all right.
Hello, my name is Stefan La Croix. I am, or was, one of the friends of the library. I am, or was, one of the Friends of the Library. And I just want to go a little bit of history here. When, I think it was even before the Weed Fire, we were very strongly supporting the measure, which brought in an extra 0.25 percent. You'd remember the name of that. And we were told, so we went around town talking to people. And that measure passed. And I don't know how much you bring in from the truck stop, but I think it increased the income by about $300,000, that measure. And we were part of it passing. So the other, I don't know, maybe my figures are wrong, but I'm just... The other thing is, as I went around talking to people in Weed, I was shocked that half the people I talked to did not know there was a library. They didn't even know it was a library. It was up on the hill. The library has to be very accessible. Even if you put it in the new center you have over here, I have a feeling a lot of people who go there now will not go there, simply because it's too far. Where it is now, people can walk to it from all over. They can come from the Bowles community, they can come from all around. So it's very, it's very accessible. It's a very, very good place. While we were in the library, we always worked very hard to bring in income. We brought in income. We spent, I don't have the figures unfortunately, but we spent huge amounts of money in that building for computers, for all the shelving, for things. Oh, I think we spent at one point a huge amount of money for the plumbing because it had fallen apart in some way. So we were not passive by any means. When we had the $120,000, we were clearly told by the city manager that, you know, this money was for the library to be able to keep it as a library. So we gave, we gave every penny we had, the $120,000. And I'll tell you, that money was taken very quickly. Like he basically took the money and said the next day we're signing to buy the building, you know, so. But, and as far as the parking goes, I agree with what the lady said. I've never, ever, ever seen that parking lot anywhere near full. So I think that to move the library to another location could make it very difficult for people to actually get to it. That's, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
I will go, in 2011, the city of Weed did what? Do you remember that? When, when you guys were down to like one day a week? Maybe two, if at the best? Do you remember who contributed? That's all I have to ask. It was the Friends of the Library. I know you contributed. But who also matched that funding was the city of Weed?
I'm not, I'm not putting that down.
And that, that support has gone on from 2011. It's just not, we're talking about a large sum of money. Justin is going, or Chief Mayberry, Acting City Manager Mayberry, is talking about just the last eight years. There's, there's another six years besides that, that this city has helped with the library. So for people to make, for me, it rings a little untrue for some of those out in the audience that would say, "How is the city supporting? Why are we doing this? Why are we doing that?" The city has made moves since 2011 to support the Weed Library. We supported it with money. We supported it with some manpower. We ended up purchasing the building. There was a few hiccups. One of them is in probably the discussions of that building. Don't really know, wasn't party to those discussions. However, I think what I see from these comments is there's a lot of emotional, emotional ties. I get that. There's a lot of emotional ties if I ask my wife to move out of a house. Whether it's a good decision or not becomes another thing. Whether the maintenance of that house is another thing. So those are the things that this council looks at besides the emotion that's attached. And I'd like to go strictly with emotion, but I don't know, at least from my point of view, if that's going to get me very far. The steps we are doing tonight is to move the library. We cannot overplay our hand other than take the initial step to get that process underway. For people to want to know this or that about where's the location? Where are you going to put it? Do I approve? Do I disapprove? We haven't made those decisions yet. When we get there, they will be there for the public to take a look at. Anytime we make a final decision, the public is aware. That is the law. So I do appreciate everybody's input here tonight. I would also make to mention that the school's library is closed because it is under destruction or construction. I'm not sure which at this point. But I do believe the city, the college stills library is open. I don't know if it's open in the summer. I'd have to go see. But that's another library location. I do agree with the people that a library is a place to meet. I can appreciate that 100%. I help run a program that does the very same thing. It's, it's initial, it's, the impetus behind it is to let people meet and talk. It's very important, especially as I get older. There's a lot of people around me who are getting older. So with that, I'll close. But I do want to assure people that we are not abandoning. It still seems like there's this thing about the abandonment. I, I don't know how many times we can tell you that we're not abandoning the library. Are we relocating it? So far, no, but things are probably going to indicate yes. That is my opinion. There are four more of us beside, or five technically. Daryl's up there somewhere. That will be taking a vote on the issue, so. Sure, you got it written down?
If I could ask a couple of questions of Chief Mayberry. Do you happen to have some historical background for me? The Weed City Library, did it start as a nonprofit organization, not a governmental agency?
I couldn't tell you how far back the actual Weed branch, when it was started. I'm, I would, maybe somebody here can provide some history on that. I do know, what, circa 1999, you mentioned COS. Anybody with a library card back then could still go, could go into COS. I don't know, is that still an option for, for anybody? So they, so that's still part of the Siskiess County Library? So you can't, she just shook her head, yes, that's why I said. Okay, but they can go in if they have a library card, even if they're not a COS student? That's what I'm asking. Because that was 20 years ago you could, I didn't know if you still could, okay? Okay, I'm dating myself. I had a library card and could go in 20 years ago and get a book and not be a COS student. So there was that partnership. The community center that used to be on the hill that we lost in the Bowles Fire, that was our branch then. Yes, and it was, it was a, it was a nice facility back then, I remember that. But as far as when the Weed branch actually started, I couldn't give you that.
Was that city-funded, any of those that you're aware of?
I haven't been able to find any records on that.
The county actually supported most of the libraries until 2011.
Yes, the, so if, if the library stays, I just want to put this out to everybody. I'm a realist and, and when I came in here, I just, I'm handed up, you know, as an acting city manager, a pile, and that's of things to do. The city is acting or operating on a structural deficit. It cannot continue to go on at its current pace without some sort of supplementation. And that's all services, not just the library. So keep that in mind. If it stays there, we have to find a solution to keep it functioning. So, and I'm, I'm just putting that out there, it's not, I'm not trying to, you know, be dark and threatening. The finance director will answer that question for you. If you would have been at one of our prior meetings, you would have heard that we are operating on a structural deficit and cannot continue at the current pace. You may have seen recent postings by a neighboring city regarding theirs. We are looking at a similar situation. So we just haven't been as public about it.
So Chief, I dovetails into my next question. When the Friends of Library dissolved, when the Friends of Library dissolved, they left $120,000 entrusted into the city?
They, is my understanding, and I'll, I'll look to the finance director. We took $120,000 from them. It appears that some money may have been donated to the McLeod Library from the Weed Friends of Library. I'm not 100% sure of that, but I'll let her speak to that.
Yeah, that is my understanding. We were given a check for $120,000 to go towards the purchase of this building. We have an assigned fund balance for the library where we track the library funds so that we, we know what the library has. That's a discussion I had with the prior librarian. I see her in the audience. We're still doing that. We know what those funds are. And it is my understanding that there, there was bad relations and the Weed Friends of the Library, who their dissolution is still pending, from what I've recently seen.
Yes, the DOJ says it's pending. I'm assuming they're just going to let it expire and not renew.
Recently, instead of donating residual funds that they had to support the Weed Library, chose to donate those funds to the McLeod Friends of the Library.
And am I not correct in reading the prior numbers that when the Friends of the Library, well, am I not correct in reading the numbers that Weed currently expends more for the library than was last donated by the Friends of the Library per year?
Our budget for the last two years of Measure O funds for the library has been slightly more than $102,000. Outside of one city, I don't think there's any other cities in this county that can say that they give that amount of money to their libraries. We've researched it.
And can I clarify? The $102,000 that's given by Measure O, does that include the money expended for all of the heating and air conditioning inside of the city library?
So yeah, those expenses are, that money is applied to those expenses to run that building.
So if we stay on track, we will expend almost three times the amount of what we were donated in about two years and four months?
We've already expended that in the past two fiscal years.
Absolutely.
Not counting the $150,000, I'm assuming that came out of general fund for the purchase of the building?
Yeah, yeah, we actually contributed more to the purchase of the building than the $120,000. But that being said, if at some point, you know, we move forward to sell that building, it's never been the intent of the city to absorb that $120,000. That, that is library money. It will be used to serve the best future for the library.
And I appreciate that clarification. I wanted, I was hoping that people would hear the numbers that we're expending to understand how important the city council thinks of this library. There was a nonprofit organization who is assisting in being able to keep the library open. And the city of Weed has basically stepped in for nonprofit organization and have been funding tremendous amount of money for the library. That's not a complaint at all. But I'm hoping the community can see from that sense of numbers how much this council cares about that library, that we are continuing to expend that amount of money. And it was brought up by one of the individuals who was commenting. They wanted to know where that money went, that they had beat the feet for, for the proposition to pass. And I can tell you, it is going into very good hands. Approximately one-third of the Measure O money is dedicated to the library. I know that because prior to sitting on the city council, I was on the Measure O committee. And I was part of the, of the people who stood up there at that lectern and told the city council at the time, the reason why we were donating one-third of Measure O is because we understood the need for the library and the community. So please know, us going over those numbers are not to say that we're complaining about it, but hopefully you can see the dedication of this city to the library. And hopefully that will alleviate some concerns that if we're moving this library from its current location to another location, that you can put aside your fears and your thoughts that the library is going to close. Obviously, there's plenty of money set aside at this point in time that we continue with our, with our aspirations to make sure the city of Weed still has the appropriate money. And I will also note, you know, I see individuals in the audience, and I do watch their facial reactions. And I know there's disagreement here, but I know that there's also individuals who have been here where this city council has supported looking at raises and augmenting their salary because we thought it was important. And it appears now that that is forgotten, that this council is making sure those librarians who are doing a tremendous job are not only just told that they're doing a tremendous job, but we're doing our best to expend, to be able to make sure that they're paid appropriately for how much we appreciate what they're doing.
Very well put. Thank you.
Yes, I would like to say that I'm totally supportive of the library. I know how important it is for the library, for this community. And I know, and I see a lot of faces that come through the doors and how much it works for everyone, especially those that are in dire needs of computers or whatnot. As Melissa said, we are in favor of moving forward. And this is, this is a great thing that actually put us all together, where we can actually think, this is where changes comes in. So this is where we are going, the beginning, and this is just the talk, the beginning of the talk. So we can implement what is to change. Change sometimes is difficult, but change can also be good. And I'm, I, like, I want to let everyone know that I am totally in supportive of the library and I appreciate each and every one of you that came from near and far to support the library. And we are in sync that we are making decisions basing on the betterment of the community. And that's very important with, with this Weed community. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Let me ask Daryl, did you have any comment, Daryl?
Mayor Parham, do you have a comment?
Sorry, I'm having some technical issues here, waiting for my microphone to recharge. Well, I've heard a lot of very strong emotions and opinions. I've, since I've lived in Weed for a quarter century, I've been a big fan of the library as well as some of the utilized services there in the past, my children. One of the things that I would like to say is regardless of, you know, how people feel or perceive these things, or how the council votes, whether they, we approve this or not, the surplus sale. For three years, I've asked the community at every meeting to get involved with the, with the city and to come to meetings. And the one time I see the room here is full is when there's misinformation about us closing the library, which was patently false. I hope that the community, and those of you from Weed and those of you that are coming from outside of Weed, will put that level of energy into supporting, bringing back a 501(c)(3) like Friends of the Library because that's something that the city has been pushing for and is necessary for our library to function. And whether we stay in the building that we're in or we move to another location, having the community be involved at that level and will only increase what the library can offer for services and how better it can be in the future. I was, learned tonight that we have some people volunteering there and I appreciate that people are volunteering. There was a time where there wasn't as much of that going on. And so thank you for those of you who are doing so. Going through on the Budget Committee this last year and looking... Going through on the Budget Committee this last year and looking where expenses are going, yes, we, we spend a lot on the library. I've seen some pretty interesting comments from people in neighboring cities that spend $5,000 or $10,000 a year on their libraries. I don't think they've realized until tonight, when the numbers were shared, that we spend as much as we do. And whether this building is, you know, surplus in the future, and the library is moved before, you know, it is sold, or whether it stays where it is for the next 20, 25 years, it's important, and I hope that everyone here will be more involved and contributing to that and helping with not just the 501(c)(3), but contributing with, you know, the volunteer time and things like that. I really don't have a whole lot more to say on that, other than as long as I'm a member of this council, I will continue to support keeping the library and funding the library to exist. And I hope that those of you that are here tonight and the people that are watching this now or in the future will understand that there is no intention in the city to get rid of our library.
One thing to add to it, I just want to let, I want to take some time for Justin. He stepped into a bad situation, not just for the, the library, but overall for the city. City's now moving into a positive area. Some of you may not think so, but I'm here, I know what's going on, I see what's going on, and things are going to get better. We'll make a decision on this library, we support the library, but I know that coming in and badmouthing, and it, and that is not right to do. He's put a lot of effort in here, as well as everybody sitting here, up here, and we appreciate you guys the most. And again, I will say, I support the library. It's, it's part of our institution in this country, so you don't get rid of them, you just try to improve them. It doesn't matter if the library is in a room this big. As long as it's maintained, loved, and people are coming to, to me, you will go to the library wherever it is. And that's, that's kind of how I see it. I was one of the kids also that drove the bike to the library. I was the one that hid behind there and waited till the library was closed. We've all done that. But to be this parted on it, I don't agree with that. I think it doesn't matter where the library is at. If you love that library like you're saying that you do, you're going to go to that library no matter where it's at. And these librarians, yeah, they will. And these librarians will take care of it like they do here. And so your opinion is your opinion, I'm listening, I'm hearing it, but at least have some respect for what we're doing. And, and if you don't, run for council, and you can get up here and make those decisions. Because I, I don't think that we have to tolerate, no, that's enough. So that's all I have to say, so I'm telling you, we support this. And, and, and that's all I have to say, because I'm very emotional about it too. Thank you.
So I think we've heard from everybody regarding our council that, that I'm assured that everybody here is in support. We're sitting before all of you confessing our report and some support. So that just leaves us with the last bit of action, and I'm looking at the council to see if, what we want to do with this motion.
I move to adopt resolution number 252025 declaring 150 Alamo Avenue a surplus property.
All second.
All in favor? Oh, actually, can we do a roll call now, because we have it?
Councilmember Whitstein?
Aye.
Councilmember Palpheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Verisong? Councilmember Mazzoni?
Yes.
Mayor Parham?
By a vote of five to zero, the motion passes, and we'll move on. I want to thank everybody for participating tonight. Hopefully you walk away with a little bit more clarity on the issues on the library and the support that the library has had and maintained from this council. So thank you very much.
I really appreciate what you guys, you're in the fucking hot seat. I really appreciate it, I've known you 50 years.
Yeah, you have.
And I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And I appreciate you for some reason.
It's been a ver, it was a very good evening, I hope you, everybody gained a little from it. Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, Ken. Shall we wait for the room to clear? Apparently we, who farted? You heard me? I couldn't help myself. It's called powdering the room. That's what my kid called it. We're on a roll, man. What time is it, 7:30? Does anybody need to take a break, bathroom or otherwise? No more than three words. I thought this was pretty good, I thought it would be here till nine. Did I ask for public comment? Okay, let's make, let's have a five-minute recess, six and a half minutes. Six minutes, 6 minutes, 45 seconds. Count, now put the clock on order. Thank you, your comments were really good, I appreciate that. We spend a lot of money, and I don't think they understand what that means to other people. I told Justin earlier, you know, Justin, I said, they've died here. I said, we, we looked up what, what they were considering. Dancing is probably not just a heavy, 1% sales, which is so, so, so long and so, so stupid. It wouldn't be stupid if they would actually share in the balance. Why can't they have a public bus? You can't find it. There's no reason, it's red times, it's spending, it's easy to figure. There's transportation needs, and maybe we can figure out a bus to take out the whole, all the homeless. I know there's a hill, but we can bring them.
No, that's cleared out.
Oh, I know, I was up there, I didn't know. Oh my, I don't know if that was a flat. A call and meeting back in order, out of break, and could we get staff reports? Mr. Carter?
All right, good evening. This, over the last month, we had 72 calls for emergencies covered by two full-time personnel, five resident firefighters, and one volunteer firefighter. And we have two new resident firefighters moving in on August 18th. So that's good. July 12th through 23rd, we are assigned to the green fire outside of Redding. I was a strike team leader, and we staffed a Type 3 engine along with four other local agencies from Siskiyou County. Currently, as of August 6th, we sent Engine 1214, staffed as part of a local strike team to the Gifford Fire in Southern California. Let's see, oh, we received our new Type 3 engine from Cascade Fire, and we'd like to bring that by possibly at the next meeting to show you guys. And we worked on getting it equipped over the last week and got to run its first call last night, which is cool. So thank you for allowing us to purchase that engine to serve our community. And update on our fuel mitigation grant, Shasta Valley RCD has completed the wildlife and botanical surveys, and they'll continue to work through the requirements to get the contractors to work. Thank you.
Can we have a, a one-car parade with all of us on it, with our new engine?
And I wanted to say, I wanted to thank Chief Carter, he's been working diligently on the firewise that I've been asking about, and so hopefully we'll be able to have that in a staff report soon.
It's, it's good for safety. I wouldn't say it's great for insurance rates, but it's good for safety. Finance Director Jill?
Just, we're working on 23, 24 audit currently. Our outside auditor, Charlie, has assured me that he's got an open schedule right now, so we can just hammer through this, so as long as I can keep up with them, we're going to get this hammered out fairly quickly, I think.
Thank you for your help on tonight's little endeavor.
You're welcome.
Public Works Director Chris?
So advantage paving will be back here on Monday. They are going to start on Clay and Inez on Monday, then do Butte on Tuesday, and then start with the rest of the project on getting stuff paved.
Oh, paved?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm really excited now. I'm going to drive my wife's car.
No, it's not an overlay, they're just paving the trenches.
I think, I'm not sure if I call you chief or acting city manager.
I don't have anything on this, you have any further questions? I think I've talked enough tonight.
Actually, did a great job tonight, so I thank you for that. Sandy?
Next week we have planning commission meeting, so that, that will be good. We've got a potential modification to a code, a request for a temporary storage container, and a request for three Airbnbs. Tomorrow night is our last movies in the park, so if you have not been to one, I highly recommend you attend. I would like to give a wonderful shout-out to 22nd Avenue Jeremy and his crew, and actually, last week was just Jeremy, so I was even pulling on a rope. So.
Did you have to hold it down the whole evening?
Well, actually, I was volunteering to pull on a rope, and I tied some off, but then I just got to pull the, the blow-up switch, so that was kind of, yeah.
How was attendance, do we need to do more advertising?
Well, tomorrow night's the last one, last week was lightly attended, but the fair was going on. So, but the, the first year, or the first night, it was very well attended. Tomorrow night's movie is The Parent Trap. Yeah.
The one before was Charlie Brown, wasn't it?
Last week was Charlie Brown, I've never seen that movie, that was good. So, yeah, 22nd Avenue Jeremy and his crew have done an absolute stellar job.
I love the screen.
Yeah. So, thank you to Weed Parks and Rec for sponsoring it, and a huge thank you to you all for finding funding to support that, though I think the community has really, really enjoyed this event. So it's been very, very positive, so thank you, guys.
David?
Legal Eagle.
I have no report this evening.
No report, didn't we, weren't you on vacation or something?
No, I was at a different meeting last time.
Take, take note, a lawyer has nothing to say.
I'm going to write it down, put it in the minutes. Okay, from staff report, we need to adjourn to closed session.
I'll make the motion to adjourn to closed session.
Aye, second.
All in favor? Do we have to do a roll call?
Councilmember Whitstein?
Aye.
Councilmember Palpheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Verisong? Councilmember Mazzoni?
Yes.
Mayor Parham?
And let's try to show that no public in the, in the.
Do we have closed session in here, can we?
No, we cannot.
Okay, well, I mean, that, otherwise, we don't, we have to move Daryl.
Daryl has a special Zoom link for closed session.
Off we go.
So off we go to closed session, Heidi Ho.